Welcome, everybody, to the November 16, 2016, meeting of the Scarborough Town Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Last Friday was Veterans Day. As we stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance, let's do it in honor of all of our veterans. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baybine?
Present.
Counselor Rowan?
Here.
Counselor Caterina?
Here.
Counselor St. Clair?
Here.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Chiazo?
Here.
Chairman Donovan?
Here. General public comments. Anyone looking to speak to the council on any issue that's not on the agenda, please feel free to go to the podium, announce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, March De Sanctus, 54 Beatrix Road. I read the 2015 annual report that was published, that we got around election time, which I wanted to thank whoever put it together. It was very nice, and since I'm in finance, I love reading balance sheets and statements of position. But I did have one question about the delinquent taxes that went back into the 90s, and I wondered what the policy is on collecting those old taxes, because it added up to quite a penny. I mean, we were getting close to a million dollars, so I don't know what the policy is on those really old ones in the 90s, and, you know, just that was my question, realizing there were so many. Thank you.
Tom Andrew, report. Do you want to answer that? Good, and we'll ask the town manager to take that up in the town manager's report later in the evening. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Hi, Katie Foley, Three Lucky Lanes, Scarborough. I just thought of this, and I should have had it prepared. The Scarborough Kindness Project, if you haven't liked our, the Facebook page, is holding a civility workshop on the 29th, and we have some professional facilitators coming in to kind of help everybody learn how to kind of talk about anything they need to talk about in a civil fashion. So there's more details on our Facebook page, and that'd be great. We'd love to see lots of people in the community come out.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Thank you. Close general public comments. Minutes of November 2nd, 2016, regular meeting. May I have a motion?
Approval.
Second. Discussion, comments, corrections. Any? All in favor? opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda? I know of none at this time. Items to sign are the treasurer's warrants, which I will do later in the evening. Order number 16-67, the 7:00 PM public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to the Town of Scarborough official zoning map to rezone property located at 79 Muzzy Road from B3, a business zone, and VR2, the Village Residential Zone, to TVC3, Town and Village Center. I will ask the town manager to introduce this item.
Dan Bacon Town Planner is here, and I would respectfully defer to him.
Very good. Thank you, Dan.
Have your password yet, Tom?
Thank you. Sorry for the delay. Dan Bacon Town Planner. This item you heard at first reading, I think, in October, and this is a zoning map amendment as introduced. There's a property located on Muzzy Road, 79 Muzzy Road, roughly halfway between the Spring Street intersection and the intersection with Gallery Boulevard, that happens to have three different zoning districts apply to that one property. As introduced, there's a B3 zone, which is a commercial zone that applies. There's a Village Residential Zone on the back portion of the property that applies, and then there's the TVC3 district that applies towards Spring Street, which is a mixed-use zone, meaning it allows some light commercial as well as some residential uses. And Rusberry Brothers approached our department, the Long Range Planning Committee, earlier this year, in September. They have it under contract, and they're interested in doing some multifamily development on the parcel that fits nicely under the TVC3 district allowances in that mixed-use zone. And given this, they're seeking a zoning change to consolidate those three zones into the TVC3 district. And this went to the Long Range Planning Committee in September. They reviewed it. They determined that, in their opinion, it was consistent with the comprehensive plan that recommends this area be a neighborhood center with a mix of uses, both residential and commercial. And the TVC3 district was established back in 2007, 2008, to implement the comprehensive plan in this area in that way. Since that time, you had first reading, and then subsequent to that, the planning board had their public hearing on this matter. On November 7th, they reviewed it, and they provided a favorable opinion on the zoning change. So that's the big picture, the change. I'm here to answer questions. I know Rocky Rusberry is here and can answer more detailed questions, should you have any on, you know, the details of the project and so on, so.
Dan, we're, just for the benefit of the audience watching on television, can you identify which of the lots are which in the three different zoning districts that are now being consolidated into one?
There's a better map, so. Different colors, but bigger. So to that, to that point, this is Muzzy Road here, and these three different, different colors and different shapes are the three different zones. So the parcel is all one parcel, and it's broken up by these three different zoning districts. This is, the red is illustrating the B3, a commercial zone, and that rest of that B3 zone goes towards South Portland, across from Gallery Boulevard. That's envisioned to be a commercial area. This bluish-green is the TVC3 district that's proposed to include the entire parcel, should this map change go into effect. And this back area, further off of Muzzy Road, is the Village Residential 2 zone, which continues onto the parcel that's behind it. And the TVC3 zone continues the other direction to the Eight Corners area. It includes the church at Eight Corners, the pizza place, a variety of those small businesses and residential properties at Eight Corners.
For orientation purposes, as you head down Muzzy Road, it's a B3 district that would be changed to a TVC district for the red.
Correct.
What, so the abudders who are most affected by this?
Yep.
Who are the abudders to, as you head down Muzzy Road, immediately adjacent to the red portion of the lot?
There's a property here that has a house on it, but it also has a small business in that house, given it's a commercial zone. And the property next to that is a multi-unit office building, the red office building, right across the street from Gallery Boulevard. And beyond that, there's...
Motorcycle shop.
Motorcycle shop. And beyond that, there's actually an open piece of land.
How about for the yellow?
The yellow here, this is Hone In, Hone In Road, and it's a short dead-end road, residential neighborhood, and so the properties here along Hone In Road are single-family houses. There's probably, you know, eight to 12 single-family houses on Hone In Road. Across the street is the Siemens Office Building, also Creative Imaging Office Building. It's across the street.
Pretty mixed use in the neighborhood.
Correct.
Good. Questions of Dan? Start down the end, and we'll move this...
Yeah, so first, I want to apologize, Dan, because I wasn't here for the first reading, and when he presented, so I apologize because of that attempt. What has been the input from the residents on Hone In Road, and what is their feedback regarding the change?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Rusberry, because he conducted the neighborhood meeting.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. Rocky Rusberry. We've met with the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting right at the church on October 5th. We sent out 35 invitations, registered mail, and actually got 22 people to come to the meeting. It was a really good, constructive, positive meeting. No one had any issue with our proposal to change the zone to all one TVC3 zone, so we've had good feedback.
Thank you. Other questions of Dan or Rocky?
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is a question that came from a constituent today, to all of us, I think. And the question was, and we talked about this last time, we thought, based on what you planned to build, that there'd be very little impact on school-aged children. I think you mentioned maybe a child or two. And then, and the constituent was just wondering, what was that based on? Are we comfortable that that's a pretty accurate prediction? Just wanted a little bit more information about how we made that sort of assessment.
Sure. I can answer that. I'll just flip my page here, and I can give you some detailed information. The units that we're proposing are virtually identical to units that we have built in Westbrook. And what they are is they're 12-unit buildings with a mix of one- and two-bedroom units, 50/50. So the units themselves don't lend themselves to be really family-type housing. And so in doing the project in Westbrook, we hired Planning Decisions to do a study for us, and they did a very detailed study. And of the 146 units that we're building there, they predicted that we would have two school-aged children. At this point in time, we're not fully built out in Westbrook. We have 102 of the 146 units complete and committed, and we have two school-aged children so far. So if the trend continues, we think we might get to three on the 146. So we feel pretty confident that, you know, maybe a couple of school-aged children would live here, but it really shouldn't have a huge impact on the, on the school system.
Rocky, are the size of the units and the rental pricing of the units similar to what's proposed here?
Very similar, yes. Size of the units exactly the same, and pricing virtually the same.
Good, okay.
Just, if I could, I've asked Dan, and he's done, started to do some national and statewide research on multifamily and what trends are, could be expected, so if it, if you'd permit him, it might be helpful just to kind of put it in a larger perspective beyond Rocky's experience.
Sure. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And the Long Range Planning Committee's also been talking about sort of these implications, so that's part of the research. In the state of Maine, we actually, based on statistics, I think we have the lowest percentage, maybe Wyoming has the lowest. We might be the second-lowest percentage of multifamily housing as a state, at 6% of the population lives in multifamily. Breaking that down, about, in the state of Maine, 4% of those that live in multifamily housing are married couples with children, and then 8% are single parents. So that's all multifamily housing in the state of Maine, so that's not necessarily just one- and two-bedroom. That could be, you know, one to four or five-bedroom. Four-bedroom might be the max, but, so I think you can kind of take those percentages and then make it a little bit more conservative. It's not as low as Rocky indicated, but I think that's, in part, the style of unit that he's doing in Westbrook and here. And I would say there's one other key piece to keep in mind, is the town, even if Rocky's predictions are off by some percentage, the town has school impact fees in place, and they are less per unit than single-family impact fees, because of statistics strongly suggest that there's a lot less school impact. But that being said, it's a little bit over, it's about $1,100 per unit that a developer has to pay for a multifamily unit towards the school impact fee ordinance. So should this project move ahead, I've estimated it to be about $80,000 that the project would pay towards the school impact fee for the number of units that they have. So that, you know, should there be four, or five, six schoolchildren, whatever the, it works out to be, you know, there is a fair amount of income to help compensate for the school impact.
Thank you.
Will?
I'm sorry, I missed the first number. Did he say 40% married and children, or 4%?
Four. 4%. Sorry if that wasn't clear.
I think it was me.
Other questions of...
So, Dan, with the, with the multi-unit, duplexes count as multi-unit, or is that a separate category?
It's a separate category.
Okay, so this is three or more units, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Other questions of Dan or Rocky? Thank you. Public, anyone here this evening who would like to address this matter, please approach the podium.
Can we ask a question?
Yes, you certainly may.
Ben Howard, Seven Windsor Pines. I'd just like to know what the target audience is for who we're trying to, I guess, get to move into the area. It sounds to me we're not looking, it's not for families. I kind of want to hear a little bit more on what the target buyer would be.
Thank you. Dan, you want to take a shot at that, or Rocky?
Frankly, our target audience is, is anyone that meets our criteria and can pay the rent. And we do have some pretty strict criteria, I'll mention. But what we've found so far with our, with our units there in Westbrook is that we really range in a wide age, from 20 on up to the 80s, but the biggest demographic is, is people in their 20s to 30s seem to be occupying. That's the largest piece. We do have a fair amount of retired people as well, but that, that really seems to be, you know, where, where the market is at, and there seems to be plenty of demand for the style of unit. I would, I would just mention that we know so far in our, you know, in our 146 units, again, 102 committed in Westbrook, the average number of occupants is 1.75 people per unit. And of the 102 units that are committed, we have seven units that have three occupants. So we have a lot of units that just have one occupant, and that, and you would think it would be with the one-bedroom units. And we also know that our vehicle parking average is about 1.54 vehicles per unit. So there's, it's just not a lot of people in these, these units.
Rocky, given the size and the pricing, is, is this properly characterized as workforce housing?
I, I would say it wa, it was. It, it probably wouldn't be something that you would call affordable, although we're not very far off. We're, we're a little under, at 100% of median in Portland, we're a little under that market. At 80%, which I think you would probably think of a little more affordable, we're just about $100 a unit over what that number would be, so we're, we're real close. So workforce housing is...
That's helpful information.
Yeah.
Thank you. Dan?
So, me first, or?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. For me, it's, you know, one of the biggest issues, I think, that we've had is, we don't have housing for the people that work in this town. You know, our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters, people that work for the town themselves, and so I think this is going to also, again, fit a need that we desperately have in this town. You know, we talk, we talk a lot about affordable housing, but that's a, that's a tricky term, and it's not, you say affordable housing, but it, that's, that term, and then you give the, the explanation for affordable housing, and it, it doesn't always add up. The state can be very tricky with how we do affordable housing. So keep in mind, like the chair said, this, what these guys are trying to accomplish is more housing for the people that live in our town. We want people to stay here. We don't want them to go anywhere. And that area where this is, is a very up-and-coming area. And I also, I think I pointed this out last time, too.
Yep.
Rocky, you guys always do such a great job, and I just, I'm always impressed every time you come here with a presentation, and I always have the utmost faith that what you say you do, and what you build you do, and it's always top-notch, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
That's not always the case, so, thank you.
Thank you. Jim Murray?
Just out of curiosity, what, what is the range of monthly fee you're looking to charge at this point? What's your market rate looking like?
$1,250 to $1,450.
Heat and hot water?
Heat and hot water included.
Okay. And a follow-up, if I may? And this is just to the council, since I won't be here after tonight, but just something to think about is when you do develop projects like this, is, I know that with the Eastern Village and Dunston Crossing, we had some set, set-asides for affordable housing, some fees or requirements, whatever, and I, you know, I would like to see that looked at, because we have a strong need for affordable housing. $1,250 a month is not exactly affordable housing for a lot of people, and my, my particular thing, of course, is senior housing, affordable, and decent housing for seniors, so. Anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Sean and Will?
Yeah, so just a question. What's the expected build-out until full occupancy?
I would estimate about a year.
Really, that quickly?
A little, maybe a little over. Once we get going, we're turning about a building a month, so, and we, so far, we've, every time a building comes online, we get certificate of occupancies, we have 12 people move in. So as long as that market holds, which we really feel it will...
And that's all phases, all buildings, is about a year?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Will?
So, one question and then a comment. The, so then, pretty low vacancy rate, like these things are just, they're full?
Oh, yeah.
They're full.
Oh, yeah.
And then, just a clarification to Counselor Caterina, if I could?
Yes.
So the, the Dunston Crossing and Eastern Village had density bonus?
Right.
To get the affordable, so that, that is an option in the TVC zone, I believe.
Right.
It wasn't elected here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions for Rocky?
Thank you, Rocky. Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Hi, March De Sanctus, 54 Beatrix Road. I'm the, the Chair of the Scarborough Housing Alliance, and I'll have Will back me up on, on this, but what we've deemed to be affordable housing, which we're using also as the term workforce housing, as interchangeable, is 80% of the greater Portland...
AMI.
AMI, there you go.
Very median.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if these are at 100, they, they wouldn't come into that affordable range.
Thank you. Mr. Rusberry, one more comment, please.
I could add just a little bit of information, if the, if the council cares to hear it. I did take a look at the chart, and basically, at 80% of median, a one-bedroom, including heat and hot water, would be, the rent would be $1,100. Again, we're at $1,250. On a two-bedroom, the rent would be $1,333, and we're at $14 to $1,450. So we're not quite there at, at 80%, but we're not real far off. At 100, it's, one bedroom is $1,390, and two bedrooms is $1,665. So we're under, under 100, but a little above the, the 80.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
Ben Howard, Seven Windsor Pines.
Mr. Howard, if you, has anyone else who hasn't spoken yet had an opportunity? Thank you. Go right ahead.
I understand that you have a wealth of statistics. I don't remember what company you used or anything. I was just wondering if you could give us some more data on what's the likelihood that this development in, in Scarborough will fill up as fast as Westbrook? I'm not quite sure what the similarities are between the two different areas. For this place, you know, I drive by it. I don't know, as a, as a younger member of the community and the workforce, I don't know if I really want to... know if I really want to live in that area. It's, it's, I don't know. It, it just doesn't scream to me that I want to move in. Westbrook tends to be closer to Portland. Uber rides are cheaper. So I was just wondering if you had that same data collecting community do a study on the particular area that this is proposed for.
Thank you. Rocky, you want to take a shot at that?
Sure. We actually did not have a study done on, on that, you know, to see what the need was. We were, we're relying on some studies that have been done by HUD that show the need in the Greater Portland area of a couple thousand units. And we know right now, you know, around 500 have been built. So we feel very confident. I don't want to say that we're, we're betting a lot of money on these projects, but we're betting a lot of money on the fact that we're, we're going to be right. We feel very confident in that. My brothers and I are involved in a couple of projects, the Westbrook project being one. We have a project in South Portland that's very similar, it's under construction, and would, would love to have this one be available to us. And, and we feel like we're, we're a little bit ahead of the curve in, in being able to get these up and built. And the market seems to be there and it, it really, all the studies have shown that, that the market is going to continue to be there. So we're very, very confident in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Public, any further comments? Close to public comment, appreciate the motion.
Move approval.
Second?
Second, thank you. Discussion.
Chris? So first of all, this is the third or fourth opportunity we've had to collect public input. So having received none personally, I assume that everybody's okay with this, so I am as well. My initial responses before remain the same, it's location, location, location. However, I do trust the planning board to do the appropriate setbacks and the appropriate mitigation, as well as the appropriate buffering to the existing neighborhood. I have faith in that process. I think they'll do a good job and I have no reason to not support this motion.
Other comments? Chris? Excuse me, Sean. Sean and Will.
The jokes I could have with that reference to Chris, but you know, that's, I agree with Councilor Chiazo. I have not received any information to suggest that this isn't in the best interest of the community. In fact, I think that, given the presentation, that this is, the change is very consistent with where the community is moving towards. I agree that it's location, and this location is perfect, given its proximity to the, you know, the main mall and other areas, and even access to other public services such as public transit. The one piece I did want to mention is that, just being a banker, is that I can tell you that with the financing for this type of project, although I don't know anything about financing with this project, but generally speaking, they're not going to build 10 units and then hope tenants come in. They're going to build one unit, get tenants to come in and make sure that they have it full, then they're going to build another unit, make sure they have the tenants come in, so it's not like they're going to build all out and then all of a sudden we have empty buildings. So they're going to meet the demand based upon what the response is as they build. So I'm very comfortable with how this is moving forward.
Well, I, I also support it. I think if you look at the map, it's, it's, it's pretty far away from the, from the river there. So, but I take your point. I also would say that it's, that it is a great location, I think really easy access to the highway.
Other comments?
Jim Murray?
Having been on Long Range Planning Committee, who thoroughly vetted this and asked a lot of really good questions, and being a real estate broker myself, there is an immense shortage of, of rental housing in this area, and it's going to take a couple of years or more to build it out, based on the figures I've seen. So I, I will support this. It's, it's needed.
Thank you. Chris and Will?
Just to comment on the Uber situation, I've taken it from my house and it's, it's about $12 and it's right off the turnpike as well, so I, I think it's reasonable.
Will?
And the other thing I wanted to say was just that, that again, that the affordability, affordability factor is supply and demand, so more supply.
Right, that's true.
Other comments? To me, parts of this zone permit this use, other parts are contiguous. And so my biggest concern was to make sure that the neighbors, who are now going to be neighbors to a different zone than they had been previously, are not going to be adversely affected. It seems to me, based on the information that we've gotten from the town planner, that they will not, this will not be harmful to the neighbors. And we've had plenty of hearings to give people the opportunity to come and express their concerns. So I will support it. Any further comments by Town Council members? Ready to vote, all in favor? Post? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
New business, Order 1672. Act on the request for the Town Council to consent to the assignment of the parking licensing agreement and a parking lease agreement to the new owners of the Higgins Beach Inn and authorize the Town Manager to sign any and all documents pertaining to this order. I'll ask the Town Manager to introduce this matter.
Yes, this council may recall, early this year, I think in January, as I recall, another prospective buyer of the Higgins Beach Inn came forward asking for a similar request and you granted it. Just by way of background, there are two different parking arrangements, one a parking lease and another parking, parking license agreement, that end up being quite important to Higgins Beach Inn and its operation. It's in a very thickly settled neighborhood and parking is at a premium. I don't have to remind this council of that fact. And so both these documents were constructed, I guess, keeping in mind that this might happen. And it, it, these, both of these documents can be assigned to a successor, but it does require consent of, of the town. And so I'm here before you, if it matters to the council, the, the current group that is, has it on contract is the Majus, or Majus Hotel Group. Incidentally, they, they operate the Black Point Inn and also the Lodge up at Sabeaga Lake. So they're, they're quite capable in this industry.
Any member of the public wishing to address the council on this issue, please approach the podium. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Just curiosity, if I could, to the time entry through the chair, wondering if we could find a way to, unless it's not the will of the council, but find a way to kind of put this in an automatic renewal situation regardless of who the owner is, so we don't have to keep addressing this every time there's a potential change of ownership, but we could revisit the agreement maybe every three years or so regardless of who owns it to, to move it through? Or if we prefer to keep going through this every time it potentially changes? Either way, I'm just, you know.
I recommend, for purposes of new owner, I think it's important just for check-in to make sure that it still makes sense to, to the town. As regards, if there's no change of ownership, at least the parking license does renew automatically, there's termination provision should we choose or they choose. For the parking lease, it is, it does have a defined term and I suggest we keep that because at some point I suspect the town may have other, other interest in that small part of the parking lot, particularly if we go to an automated system to operate that parking lot. The current arrangement is a quid pro quo. There's no renumeration for this, for use of this, these spaces. They in turn provide service to us by opening and closing the gate daily. And that certainly saves us money. We would otherwise have to have staff there frankly before dawn. Particularly fishermen are there very early in the morning and certainly at dusk. So it, it has been a very fruitful relationship so far.
Chris?
Yeah, and my only concern would be, I'd hate to have to withhold sale or have them hold any processing waiting for us to act, you know, if it's, if this is one of the conditions of sale, you know, that was my only concern, is that they'd have to wait for us or get other approval, but I'm comfortable with it either way.
We've done it twice. We haven't filed up any closing dates. A project of this size is a fair amount of due diligence and so a couple of weeks' notice seems reasonable.
Other comments?
How, I'm just curious, how often do we reevaluate whether or not this is still the, the best use of these, these spots? I mean, if it, if not when it comes up? But I mean, especially to your point, the parking at a premium there, that, that on-street parking, like is this still the, what we want to do with it?
There's no automatic trigger for it to come up? You build it in or you can advise that you want to review it on some periodic basis?
So wanted to ask that, now, since we are reviewing this for this, for this transaction, one, I would hope that we're not reviewing it as a result of sale on a frequent basis since, you know, hopefully we have long-term owners of the, of the inn. But secondarily, as to the Town Manager, has there been any issues reported regarding the current arrangement that we need to be concerned with, given the attention to parking and other behavior issues, I guess, if that's what you, how you-
On a personal basis, I have not received any complaint for either, either arrangement.
Thank you.
No, and I haven't heard anything from Bob Westberg, who I see fairly frequently. So he's never mentioned that there was a problem in managing that space.
Right, okay, thanks.
Other comments? Chris?
Yeah, if I could, just to clarify, I think I heard from the Town Manager to Councilor Rowan's point, the lease is renewed regularly, it's reviewed, what is, what's the, every three years, four years?
I believe it's a five-year term.
Five years. So regardless of nothing else happens, I assume that lease will come before us anyway, and that's our opportunity to kind of revisit and check in. I, I assume if that's correct.
That is correct with regards to the parking lease.
Does it have an early expiration right?
It doesn't, but it does have a termination provision, 90-day notice. So we're able to undo this should we find some other interest or need.
Yeah, so it's really not a five-year commitment. It's really a 90-day commitment.
90-day commitment, but I, excuse me.
If you, if you choose to, to exercise your right to end the relationship. Will?
So my only point would be that it wouldn't come up before us as a matter of business until the, you know, 2021.
Exactly. Other comments?
My, my experience with Higgins Beach in particular is folks are very attentive to their neighborhood and what goes on. I suspect if there are issues-
You'll hear it from them.
We'll all hear it.
Other questions, comments? Bob Westberg, Diane Garofalo, longtime operators, owners have done a terrific job. They live at Higgins Beach, they still will live at Higgins Beach, so they'll still be around, great people. And it looks like they're turning it over to an entity that knows how to run inns. If anyone's been to the Black Point Inn, they know that's certainly a beautifully run operation.
Great restaurant.
Further comments? All in favor? Post? Unanimous, thank you. Order 1673. Act authorize the Town Manager to enter into an inter-local agreement with the town of Hollis for shared vehicle maintenance and repair services. Ask the Town Manager to introduce this one.
Yes, this whole arrangement was contemplated through the budget process, actually. Mike Shaw included in his budget some additional revenue for provision of these contracted services. And we also considered and contemplated, and you funded, the, a new vehicle technician to help service some of this demand. As you may recall, the arrangement we have in place more than covers those costs. In fact, we make about 20% profit on the arrangement and it's still very lucrative for the other communities. This council on June 15th authorized me to enter into inter-local agreements with Old Orchard Beach and Westbrook. And we did so with Westbrook almost immediately thereafter, excuse me, with Old Orchard Beach. Westbrook, for a number of reasons, hasn't been able to sign their part of the deal. And so we have continued to work with existing staff and held off hiring any new staff until we had additional services. And we were approached by the town of Hollis, they heard how successful the arrangement with Old Orchard was and would like us to provide the same services. So what's before you is exactly the same inter-local agreement that is in place with Old Orchard. And I should mention that now the town of Standish has expressed interest. We're, we'll evaluate carefully what our capacity is, we don't want to over commit for sure.
Very good. Members of the public wishing to address this issue, please approach the podium. Set the motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Discussion. Peter?
Yeah, through the chair to Tom. Tom, in reading it, it sounded like when we added the new technician to take care of the servicing, that the volume for Westbrook was going to more than pay for it. Did I read correctly, though, that we're not sure the volume for Hollis will completely cover the, the cost of a full-time, or will it cover?
I believe it will. The combined workload will. As I said, we've held off, so we've actually booked revenue for four months without any expense. So this year we're to the good for sure, but I believe combined, we've evaluated their fleet, their inventory as part of this. We would never enter an agreement unless we had a great deal of assurance what we're buying into.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'm very comfortable and confident that we'll cover these costs and-
That was just unclear to me in sort of the, the write-up, whether it, it more than covered or covered, so, thank you.
And I should mention, there was a resident that inquired about whether this is something the town should be involved with. And first and foremost, we were approached, and we were approached because of our, I guess, our technical expertise and the fact that these services are fairly specialized, particularly for fire vehicles. The engine work and mechanical work is a dime a dozen, if you will, but the pump work, we have invested heavily in uniquely qualified technicians that have this special skill. And for these other departments, particularly the smaller ones, they're sending them hundreds of miles away for servicing. So the downtime, the extra cost, and in, in the, in the sense of regional cooperation, inter-municipal cooperation, it just made perfect sense. I should mention also, these folks are not working full-time for these other communities. There's a side benefit for the town, that when they're not working on these vehicles, they're available to us. And this will help reduce any of those additional demands that stretch us fairly thin certain times of the year by having an extra body around.
Chris? If I recall during our budget discussions, also one of the questions was, is our, you know, our vehicles or our requirements going to be superseded by a contract with another department? Can you clarify that position again, Tom, with this? Because my understanding was with the, with the Old Orchard and Westbrook agreements, you know, we have an obligation. However, there isn't necessarily a prioritization other than our work. If our work comes in, that's the important, and that'll get done first before, we're not, we're not going to push our work out to accommodate them, basically.
Sure, I suspect we'll, we will have a technician assigned to these two towns and so that, that's part of the administration of it. But there's two different components. One is the typical predicted operative, preventive maintenance program. So that can be scheduled and we'll schedule that to suit all of our needs, theirs and ours. There could be occasion when a frontline piece of a fire apparatus goes down, that is kind of an emergency situation, where that will take priority. And we'll find a way to sort through those, those challenges. But we have technicians that can, can work across the entire fleet, so we can push and pull folks where the, where the demand is. And the, the real unpredictability is during winter operations, when you have plows that go down or, you know, a, a fire apparatus doesn't happen quite as frequently.
Thank you. Jim Murray?
I can't emphasize enough that the Main Municipal Association is really encouraging towns to do these sort of sharing of resources for, I mean, it's cost-effective. It makes sense, it saves us money in the long run for property taxpayers, not only for us, but for the other communities. So I, I like seeing these types of agreements personally.
Other comments? See none, ready to vote, all in favor? Post? Unanimous, thank you. Order 1674. Act on the request from Main Farmland Trust to the Town Council to amend the agricultural easement approved on September 1, 2010 on the property known as the Firth Farm located on Ashwam Road to allow new infrastructure to support the farm operation. Ask the Town Manager to introduce this matter.
Yes, back in September 2010, the town, in conjunction with Main Farmland Trust, acquired an agricultural easement on what was then called the Fancy Farm, but it's now the Firth Farm. Essentially, we bought the development rights for that property. And in rough numbers, we get the value of conservation for half the price. And in this case, equally important, Daniel Mays, who's the owner and farmer, is able to actually run a successful farm operation at that location. So it's really, has emerged as a really important tool for conservation. And in this case, there's some secondary benefits. At any rate, the town is a backup holder, if you will, of that agricultural easement. The trust is the primary holder and runs all kind of the, the annual monitoring reports to make sure everything's being complied with. As part of, the whole property is covered by the easement, although there's a little carve-out that is the Farmstead property- carve-out that is the farmstead property, and allows Mr. Mays to do certain other things. He owns this property, he can use and operate within that farmstead area with less restriction, I'll say. Most recently, and Daniel can speak to it better if you wish to hear, I believe he's looking to put an additional structure, a chicken barn or coop of some sort, and would like to put it outside the existing bounds of that farmstead area. And so we've been asked, and the trust is certainly in agreement, to modify the easement to allow that to happen.
Thank you. Public comment? Anyone wishing to address this issue, approach the podium. Motion?
With approval.
Second.
Discussion. Chris?
I had the opportunity to visit the Firth Farm twice this summer in my travels, and I see no reason to not support this. It's a well-managed farm, it's productive, it's a great conservation partnership, and anything I think we can do to further encourage that is more than welcome.
Other comments? Jean Marie?
I happen to know that Firth Farm eggs are really good, because when I go to the market here, and get them all the time. But anyway, that being said, you know, I think that Scarborough, we're doing a really good job as a town for making sure that we're trying to maintain our agricultural background and heritage. I, it is definitely a movement at the foot to encourage more local produce and farm goods and meats and eggs and whatever. So anything we can do to support that, and I don't have a problem, I think it's fine. If he wants to build a chicken coop that the raccoons and whomever can't get into, that's a good thing.
Good will.
So I think the recommendation of the Maine Farmland Trust carries some weight. I also think it's a pretty modest request for us to support local farming, and I echo the Jean Marie sentiments.
Thank you. Other comments? I echo your comment, and it's a modest change for an agreement that provides real benefit to the community. Ready to vote? All in favor? Post? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Order number 1675, Act on the request to certify the results of the municipal elections that were held on Tuesday, November 8, 2016, and I'll ask the town clerk to.
If I could make a few comments just prior to reading the results. There were some articles in the newspaper last week with regards to the town having a recount, or we had lost 2,700 ballots, and that was not the case, neither instance. What had happened was, we ran absentee ballots on Monday, but some drives from that day had not been run Tuesday. So we followed the steps that the Secretary of State authorized us to do on Wednesday, when we realized that, or I had realized that that had happened. So at 2:30 on Wednesday afternoon, after the Secretary of State had notified all the parties, we were authorized to open the containers that held the tally sheets and the tally slips. And we proceeded to add those tallies in from Monday. So what I present tonight is for certification, is the results for the municipal election. For Town Council, Marjorie De Sanctus with 4,048 votes, William Donovan, 6,433 votes, Kathleen Foley with 6,735 votes, Annalee Rosenblatt with 3,842. The two top were Bill Donovan and Kathleen Foley. For Board of Education, Carrie Lyford with 9,155 votes, Jody Shea with 9,780 votes. Trustee for the Sanitary District, Aubrey Strauss with 9,524, and the write-in Joseph Carroll with 87. And I present that as for certification.
Thank you. Members of the public wishing to address this matter, please approach the podium. Motion, please. With approval. Second. Discussion. Chris?
I just wanted to point out that none of the races, the results changed as a result of those 2,700 ballots. That's unfortunate for some people at this table, but nonetheless, I did watch the results, I thought it was handled very professionally. It was under the supervision of the Secretary of State, for sure. So I commend the staff for recognizing it, finding it, and reacting to it as quickly as they did.
Good. Jean Marie?
Having formerly been the assistant election warden for this town before I decided to run for office myself, I know the amount of work that goes into running elections, particularly in a presidential year. And the people need to remember that we were not allowed to run absentees for the last one or two elections. So being able to run absentees prior to, again, is a new step. I felt it was handled extremely professionally, I was extremely disappointed to find out the reactions of some folks, but it is what it is. And I can't begin to thank Todi and her crew for the hard work that they do, so.
Second there. Other comments? John?
So I want to reiterate, specifically, Todi, I hope you know that you have the confidence, at least I believe, the entire Town Council. I think you handle yourself extremely professionally, as well as the manager, in responding to what could be viewed as a critical situation. I've lived through five elections with you personally, over really 17 years, and things have been worse in the past. And I can just say is that every time, and it's not you that's been worse, it's the political environment, you have always been professional, your staff is absolutely wonderful, the volunteers are incredible for what they do and what they give. And so I hope that you know that while some people might try to be negative, you've never lost my confidence in what you do, and I really appreciate everything, as well as to Tom, because it's critical on how it was perceived, and I think that you gave some very good comments to the public, and really calmed that down. And you guys reacted very quickly and very positively.
If I could just say, we were so fixated on getting clear direction with the Secretary of State, and then getting about the business of getting it right, I was somewhat neglectful, and I apologize in hindsight, particularly for those candidates that were on that, one or more of those ballots. That certainly should have been something that I thought of in terms of making aware that this was underway, and to the members of the Town Council, that we had an issue that we're working through. So in hindsight, I would have done it differently, but I assure you, we were solely fixated on getting about the business of getting it right.
Other comments? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. None action items, none at this time. Standing Special Committee reports and liaison reports. Chris?
Energy has not met since the last time we did. School Board met on November 3. They revised the 2016-17 school calendar, and basically fixed the last day of school, which is subject to change, because we haven't hit the winter yet, but they've at least, in theory, got it locked down. Went through some other co-curricular appointments and things like that. They're meeting again tomorrow to elect their chair and vice chair, and go over a workshop with this NEAS update, which is their accreditation update, as well as a book report that they are supposed to comment on. So I'll inform the council as necessary based on that.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, a couple things to report. The senior group, Senior Advisory Committee Program Advisory Board, met on November 14. Couple things, they did have a table at the election, and during it, there'd be 12 new seniors that came by and got some information, expressed an interest, which is good, as they're trying to expand their membership. Two, we're on track, they're going to actually have, Martin's Point, as I mentioned last time, has provided sort of a community room for the town to use for different things. The seniors are going to have their first events there in February. Bingo is going to be there, moving there on the February 13. And their first senior luncheon will be there on Wednesday, 2:15. So we're moving forward with that, and out of the generosity of Martin's Point, so thank you. Kind of an update on Closing the Gap, which is really about talking about the Eastern Trail. There's some really good developments, some things that are now on the town website. There is a drone video that was just released, which really brings some clarity to where the trail's going, and it really shows visually what it's going to look like in the kind of the territory that it goes off over. There is also up now a GoFundMe page, and it's GoFundMe.com/etclosethegap. That's also, I think, Tom put it on the town website, so there's a link to it, so if people want to go out and if you want to support the trail, it's an easy way to give some contributions to do that. Both the Coastal Harbor and the Shellfish Commission met on the 8. Couple things that did come up, there is an ad hoc meeting now, or group meeting, to talk about the co-op and parking and uses down there. They've met twice now, they're progressing in conversations, which is good. There was a real scare on the clam flats, especially down East Main, of a new sort of version of red tide, which was really causing some illnesses in people, and actually some fatalities. That has been cleared up, but it was a real concern for a while. And we had a healthy conversation, a spirited conversation about the health of the clam flats here, and conversation about licenses, and we've kind of, they're kind of holding off to get some new information, just about what has been happening to the production of the clam flats in the last couple of years, and in particular, we just don't have results from last summer. So we're still kind of on hold for that. And I think with that, that kind of sums up.
Thank you. Justice Sankler?
The only thing I have is, I haven't had any meeting, no meetings since last time, but the ad hoc committee for the Public Safety Building is going to be meeting on the 30th, for our very first meeting at 6:30, and those are going to be held at the Public Safety Building. So our first meeting is on the 30th. And so obviously, we haven't had it yet, we don't have any information yet, but it's exciting. The letters went out to congratulate everybody who was appointed to that, so everyone knows now, and so we're excited to get started.
Great, thank you. Jean Marie?
Yeah, the Conservation Commission, we met Monday night. They are doing a very interesting project, looking at sea level rise here in Scarborough, but interviewing various town departments as to, you know, how reactive we are versus proactive, and looking at, you know, what's going on. Of course, this week, you have the King Tide, which makes for some interesting situations in particularly Pine Point area. So it's been very interesting, working with the Conservation Commission along those lines. But that's a big project, and they will be reporting back to the council on this. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Will?
The Affordable Housing Alliance met on Thursday. We were finalizing the requirements to be given to the Planning Board for a developer meeting their obligation for affordable housing on a project. And that was really for two projects that are currently in motion. We're also joined by a lawyer for Mr. Chamberlain, who's developing the Dunson Crossing property. He was presenting the plan for how they intended to meet the requirement there. There was some consternation on the commission about how this has developed over time, and it doesn't really meet the letter of the initial, I guess, agreement of the plan. But there appears to have been some relief from the Planning Board over time, and so they're still awaiting, I think, final input from the Housing Alliance. There were also a healthy discussion around some ideas for the comprehensive plan of state. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Rosa Bevah?
Thank you, just a couple of items, I'm going to pass around some materials to support the report. First is to report on the library, they have their board meeting tomorrow, but this is a nice quick overview about their progress with the Little Free Library Initiative. And to generalize and to kind of bring that all together, it's been a huge success since its initiation. There are now 15 different Little Free libraries across Scarborough. You know, just some of those are Aslan Drive, Route 77, Eastern Trail, Scarborough Grounds, Memorial Park, so forth so on. And, you know, really, get a chance to go and at least look at it. I look at this project as if you do want to visit it, kind of like visiting all the restaurants on Diners, Divers, and Drives, and if you can check them all off, this should almost be like a bingo game, because each library is a little bit different design, so I think it's really exciting. And just in relative terms, I actually serve on the Rotary Club for another community where I work, and communities are different. I can't get their library to support a Little Free library, because it's more of a challenge, even though we're such a great example. I think it's a great example that Emily Reed and the entire library board has done, so I want to congratulate them on their success for that. I also want to mention that there's new strategic plan for the new cycle, is available for your review, as well as input. So if you want to go to their website, it is available on that website, and I know that Nancy and Emily would love to hear your input, as well as myself, and I can communicate that back, so, thank you. Next, I wanted to also hand out, recently, EcoMaine, I serve as liaison with Mike Shaw to EcoMaine, and I really wanted to share their annual report with you, because we are a significant owner, partner in this relationship, and I think it's important that you understand, because it has gone over time in different cycles, and the importance of our relationship. So it's a true success story about where they have been, to where they are now, and also where they're going. So that is for you to kind of peruse as well. And next is, it's not official, because it's really in a different capacity, I also serve on the Cumberland County Budget Advisory Committee, served co-chair this year, and wanted to at least advise you that we have completed our work for the county commissioners. Our recommendation to the commissioners is to approve a budget of 5.99% tax increase across the board. The manager just, I just saw him twitch a little bit, and it is pretty significant. But we also face the challenge that we recognize that there is a significant loss of state revenue that is being projected in that. It's about $1 million to $1,200,000, so it's significant. I will mention, because it's important to us from a planning perspective, is that one of our fiscal notes was that we are actually recommending that the county change its fiscal year from a calendar year, I'm sorry, from a fiscal year being July to a calendar year, if I got that correctly.
The other way around.
The other way around. The importance of it is that the next budget cycle will actually be an 18-month budget, which means that there will be an automatic increase as a result of that. So I'll keep you informed about that, because it's very important that you understand the impact of that. And last but not least, I did want to mention, I'm also a member of the Legislative Policy Committee for Maine Municipal Association, and we're meeting tomorrow. We're hopefully finalizing our initiatives, priorities for MMA. I actually serve now with our assistant manager to represent the town, and it's pretty significant, given the results of this election, as well as some of the, particularly the referendum questions, and the impact on the budgeting. So I will report out to you later what those initiatives are, not just in the finance area, but also the other policy, as well as I know that Larissa will do the same, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. I didn't have any committee meetings, but I met with the school finance director to educate myself on the new teacher contract. I think it's important for people to understand, there's a good handout that is on their website, and is very informative of how they perceived their responsibility. I also read the library's new strategic plan that Sean referenced, and that's an important document. I think the library is going to play a greater role for the community in the future, and can be quite a valuable asset. Town managers report.
Yes, very quickly, last evening, my staff hosted a neighborhood meeting in Pine Point, down at the firehouse. This was to begin the process regarding a master plan of the Pine Point area. We have long known that East Grant Avenue itself needs a lot of attention, there's longstanding drainage issues, crumbling infrastructure and the like, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure we're looking at it comprehensively. And so last night was the first of this effort. I was advised that between 40 and 50 people were there, I think perhaps Counselor Hayes was there, for at least a bit, anyway. And the report from my staff was that, from their perspective, it was kind of a resounding success, in that great participation, they had two hours of really good dialogue and comment, a lot of input. And having some experience working in beach communities generally, Pine Point in particular, I guess, we're sensitive to the fact that we need to do a lot of outreach, not just early, but often throughout the whole process. So we built that into our schedule, and we'll certainly live up to that standard. The council will sort itself out over the next couple of weeks, and two weeks from now, you'll reorganize yourself, but. But unlike many years, things slow down this time of year. We try to slow things down. There's a number of things that are bubbling, and will be bubbling to the surface, not the least of which are kind of the growth management ordinance and growth permits. We, it seems like a consistent item on your agenda is multifamily housing and kind of the impacts. That's a real rich topic that I'd love to engage the council in. There's a lot of history, there's a lot of detail associated. So that would be a great topic that we probably should deal with sooner than later. Recreational marijuana, it looks like we bought a little time, but there's issues abound around that issue. Kicking off the comprehensive plan is right around the corner, and we'll be finalizing our facility plan, and we're doing a campus master plan, kind of coincident with that. Not to mention goal setting, and perhaps team building, if the council chooses to. And a meeting with your legislative delegation is probably something we'll order within the next few months. And similarly, ordinance committee, there's four or five things that have kind of lined up that I'd love to bring to the committee and have them prioritize, perhaps fireworks being one of them. So there's a lot of work to be done. I'm anxious to get reorganized and get moving. Just a reminder, holiday schedule, we're closed Thursday, Friday next week. I hope you're all enjoying yourselves with your families. And I just want to take a minute to appreciate Jean Marie's time on council. I really enjoyed working with Jean Marie. She's one of the hardest workers I've ever had the occasion to work with, and I've always appreciated kind of your positive disposition. You kind of approach everything, and I certainly hope you don't go too far. There's committee work, all sorts of committee work that we'll be happy to put you to work at. And also to thank Counselor Donovan, Chairman Donovan. Bill has been tireless, for those of you that don't know. Bill is in my office or calling me certainly every day, multiple times a day, and not to be nagging, these are substantive issues, and I often feel like he's a member of staff on a number of things. So he's really been a tireless advocate for, on behalf of the residents, and really been a great resource to staff at the same time. So, Bill, I thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Counselor comments. Chris will start with you.
So I did want to start off by also echoing my thoughts on Counselor Caterina. It's been a joy to serve with you for the past year.
Thank you.
Both being Italian, we tend to have very heated discussions, which I'm going to sorely miss, but I'm sure I won't miss them that long, because my phone will be ringing as usual, first thing in the morning. So I wish you the best, and thank you for all your support and guidance my first year on the council. I very much appreciate that. And I wish you the best, and I won't say goodbye, I'll say ciao for now, because we're not going anywhere. So, second thing I wanted to mention is, there's a free community Thanksgiving dinner that the school department and the town are cooperating on. There's been a little bit of, I guess, misunderstanding maybe out in the community. This is not a welfare type or a free meal for homeless or something like that. It literally is just a community meal. If you find yourself in town, and you're single, or your family is traveling, or you bring your family in, it's going to be at the Wentworth School from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There is no cost to attend, but you are asked to please RSVP and let them know. The school and the town are not necessarily picking up the tab for this, although I believe we are donating some transportation.
That's our contribution.
Yeah, and the school department, I believe, is donating the facilities. However, Peter Esposito, who is the food service manager, I don't know if you, if any of, for those who don't know, the Espositos are very well-known in the greater Portland area, probably Italian, of course, for their restaurant skills. And Peter is an absolutely amazing cook. His family is donating their time to prepare the meals. There have been a very well-received outreach from the community through Project Grace for both monetary and volunteering support. So it's really just an opportunity to get together and share a meal together. There are income requirements if you find yourself in town, and you want to stop by the Wentworth from 11:00 to 1:00. Just the only thing they ask is please RSVP ahead of time, so they know how much food to prepare and who's going to be there. Last but not least, I don't want to, well, let me take a step back. First of all, we passed a very tumultuous, or crazy, I guess, shouldn't say tumultuous, but a very crazy election cycle. Congratulations to Katie, Katie Foley, and all those who were successful in their races. It takes a lot to throw yourself out there, and as we all know, who've done it before, certainly from behind this table, it can be a grind. But I did want to mention a few things that really kind of disturbed me a little bit through this cycle. As an individual candidate, I expect to receive criticism. I certainly, you know, would prefer it not to be negative, I'd prefer to talk about the records, but I will thank Representative Soraki. She did not do any negative attacks, per se. But one of the few things I did find disturbing was, one of the major parties in town did, I feel, attack the integrity of the council and school board. I personally, as a representative of Scarborough, am very proud of the fact that we're nonpartisan at the local level. I think it's critical to our ability to solve problems and address issues fairly and respectfully that we don't put letters after our names. I think that, coupled with as well some actions by some of us here on the council that openly supported a few candidates, I think that's a very dangerous position. It's not, it's, as an individual, it's a tough call. You know, I think we all have the right to support and say who we want as individuals, but as soon as we start invoking our position from behind this table, I think we're on a very slippery slope. And it's not one particular individual, that happened on a couple of occasions. So I would just kind of caution the group, I call it my Eisenhower speech. If you realize, in 1960, Dwight Eisenhower said, beware of the political military machinery complex and the power behind it. If we choose to open ourselves up to partisan elections, that's an option. Other communities do it. I just really worry that that would put us in a position as a town to be a little bit more divisive, and quite frankly, I don't think we need that. So I'm hoping that we all, you know, take a step back, we take a breath. The results are in, they're finished, they're finalized, we've all voted on them, we've accepted them. Now let's put it all behind us and move forward and get on with the business of managing the town.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I mean, I think it kind of piggyback on, you know, a lot of, but, Justice Bevah, certainly thank Jean Marie for her service in the years that she spent here, and her passion that she brought. And, you know, to Counselor Donovan, thank you for your leadership this past year. I mean, this is the second year for me on the council, but it was a big difference between the first year here and this year. We've made progress, which is all good, so thank you for that. And then I kind of, you know, just kind of piggyback on a little bit about the national election, and just, you know, what I'm really concerned about, just our lack as a community, as a state, as a nation, to have civil, respectful conversations. Certainly, the level of discourse we saw was really concerning. So what I hope is, all of us take ownership and say, not again. And I really look to, and again, I mentioned, the dialogue in this town has changed. It certainly, I observed it last year around some of the tough issues, getting better. There's a group in town, the Scarborough Kindness Project, that's really trying to do some things to help all of us to have a respectful exchange of ideas and values and those types of things. What was mentioned earlier tonight, that there's going to be someone coming to town to kind of help with that dialogue. I just encourage all of us, let's have Scarborough not be like every place else, and bring that here, and find ways that we can act respectfully and civilly to each other. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
Good, thank you.
Jean Marie?
Well, I'm going to start by saying thank you to all of my fellow counselors. I've certainly enjoyed my time working with all of you, and for you guys who are willing to talk to me at 7:30 in the morning, when I've got a question or something that comes up. Also to Tody and Tom, I know I've worked with other communities in various capacities, and we run a top-notch show here in Scarborough. And without you guys running the front office, so to speak, I know what can happen, having seen it happen in other places. I would like to thank the people of Scarborough for allowing me to serve for the past three years. I hope that you think I have done a credible job on your behalf during my tenure on this council. While we may not have always agreed on matters that were hotly contested during my tenure, I am pretty sure that you will agree that you always, always knew where I stood on matters. I'm not one that waits to see which way the wind blows, and I certainly am not a good poker player. They've never been my strong suit, so I will own up to that. While I was hoping to continue my service to you in Augusta through fighting to prevent the continued shift in taxation policy towards lower, flatter, and inherently unfair income tax movement that causes a spike in property taxes, and obviously, there is a trend away from increasing financial support for quality public education, which I don't think is correct. And also, I really, truly disagree with the thinking that increasing property tax exemptions are going to come anywhere near providing meaningful tax relief to struggling seniors. You need to understand that I'm not going away. I still live at 311 Gorham Road. I will still use my speed dial and my personal connections to fight for what I think is right. I will continue to advocate for all of you as my neighbors and my friends in Scarborough. And again, I thank all of you for the opportunity to serve. I hope everyone stays in touch. I'm just an email or a phone call away. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, so, not to sound redundant, but Jean Marie, thank you, on a job well done. I really appreciate your service and your friendship, and I appreciate you not going away. And Bill, I appreciate the time that you put in as chair. I really think that you've also done a wonderful job, and I'm appreciative of it. Speaking of more statewide elections, the question one about legalizing recreational marijuana, I hope that we're going to consider some kind of moratorium while we sort out the ordinance. I know that was, that was mentioned a couple of weeks back, but it seems like that's a pretty serious thing that we're going to want to get right, and not have something happen by default. Question two, also very close, but also passed, it's something that I struggled with personally, because I agree that there's been a shift to the local property taxpayer on, for education funding. So what I'm hoping is that now Augusta has heard pretty clearly that the state, the taxpayers in the state would like the legislature to fund education at 55%. So my expectation is that this coming spring, we're going, in April, we're going to see 55% funding coming to Scarborough, and I'm certain that I will not be disappointed.
You know who to call if you are.
Just call me, I'll call my connections.
But in all seriousness, I really think that that's an issue, and then I hope that I'm not the only one who will be expressing that sentiment to our legislative representation. And I also wanted to thank Katie and Peter for mentioning the civility workshop. Once again, it is Tuesday, November 29th, at 7:00 at Wentworth, and I'm going to read the event, and then I'll stop. So please join the Scarborough Kindness Project and several, several local dignitaries as we welcome Terry Hayes to Scarborough. Terry is a former state legislator, the current Maine State Treasurer, and she is a skilled and knowledgeable practitioner of, and advocate for, civil discourse. Terry will be with us a short, excuse me, showing us a short temporary, temporary, I have no idea what that means, showing us a short video introducing concepts related to civility and facilitating both self-discovery exercises and group discussion slash problem solving. To encourage rich and productive dialogue, Terry will have participants sit with people they don't already know. She and participants will not be talking about issues specific to Scarborough community dynamics. This is not the place to air grievances, but to connect with neighbors, identify common ground, and learn techniques for communicating both effectively and respectfully. Terry has promised civility pins to participants, and Drew Serbin, Chair of the Republican Town Committee, has signed on as a snack sponsor. We have other sponsorship opportunities available, so message me, and I believe that means Aaron, but I think anyone on the Kindness Project, for details about the sponsorship opportunities.
Thank you, Will.
No, I am, thank you.
Sean?
So a couple, I've got a few things here. So first, to piggyback what Counselor Chiazo's comments regarding the influence of local party, political parties with local issues and local candidates, I totally agree with him. This is the second year in a row in which one particular party has focused more on the negative of those who are running against others, rather than supporting the strength of their own candidates. And I think that while we can focus on civil discourse and how to be better stewards, you have to at some point call that out. Because the fact is that the reference that he's making, which talked about decisions made by counselors, is actually factually incorrect. And the data proves it, and I'll be happy to show anybody that data, because I've kept it since 1997. So I'll leave it with that. The second piece is about the elections. Wow, what a night, huh? I got to tell you, I went to bed early because I couldn't handle it, and I thought I was going to have a heart attack. So I woke up with the same information everybody else did, and while that our new president is not my cup of tea, I think that in the sense of community, we do all want him to be successful, because it's extremely important to the country as a whole. And I do wish him luck. I might have different goals than he does, but I do hope that he is successful, because we can't go down the path that it appears we've, we're going down as part of the campaigning. Locally, I've already mentioned, Tody, I think you did a great job again. It's absolutely awesome to see what we do here. It's really exciting. I do want to thank the citizens of Scarborough that came out and voted, because if you actually look at the details of the voter outcome for just local, it does tell us a story about who we are, some of our decisions, both at, whether it's the presidential race, or the state races, or local referendums, it does give us some sense of who we are as a community and as a kind of a political geek in looking at those numbers. It does help me in understanding some of the issues that we're faced. What I did want to mention is, continuing with the election first, is to, Jean Marie, I'm not going to say goodbye, because I know you're coming back. So in some capacity, you will be back, and I just want to say thank you. I think that the one thing I've recognized over the last two years that I've been back is that you are a woman and a leader of integrity and character, and I think that you have represented Scarborough extremely well, and we all appreciate that very, very much. To Counselor Chiazo, you know, you are a tough cookie in the sense that, you know, you're not in my district, so I couldn't vote for you, although I wanted you to, I wanted you to win. But I want you to know that there is still a silver lining. First of all, I got to mention is that you and I share a unique, kind of a unique experience. We both served on school board, we both have been on the town council, and we both have lost a house race while we were serving on the town council, so we have that experience. But the way I looked at it, and the advice I had gotten from counselors back when I ran in 2006, was that the citizens of Scarborough decided that they wanted to keep you closer to home, to protect them and advocate for them on behalf of the town. So I think you're going to continue being an excellent counselor, and I'm really glad that you're still here with us. So I appreciate that. To Counselor-elect Katie Foley, or I hope you don't mind calling me Katie, I don't think you really go by Catherine, or Kathleen. I think it's awesome, I served with your sister, so I served with a Foley Ferguson, I'm now serving with a Foley, who knows, I might be here long enough to serve with Mackenzie Ferguson, which is her niece, so who knows? But welcome aboard, you're going to love it. As long as you keep, no matter what side of the issue, as long as you keep the people in mind, you're going to really enjoy doing the work, because it is fun. But there's going to be a quick reality, you're going to have one-third of this community that's not going to like your decisions, no matter what they said during the campaign, there's going to be a third that absolutely agrees with you, and then there's a half that will sit there and falter back and forth, that's kind of, that's that Vex diagram. I saw you do it, it's a Vex diagram. There's that half that sits there, and they overlap, and they're going to go back and forth. So welcome aboard, I'm really excited about working with you, and congratulations. Bill, I am extremely happy that you won reelection. You have been an incredible leader that has really redefined, if not defined, what the role of chair has been for the past year, and I think our success in this past year has really been headstrong, starting with your position and your work. I appreciate that. I hope that with the manager's comments regarding- I hope that with the manager's comments regarding goal setting is that we also take an opportunity to look back because one important part of goal setting is looking back at your previous goals and determining, did we meet our expectations? Do we agree with the measurements and what were the outcomes so that we can build on that? Because I've been through many town councils and we've never looked back and said, were we successful? Do we all agree with where we've been because it's a part of moving forward? So I'm really excited about that process because I think that this year has been probably one of the most successful in my experience of being on the council and that goes back to 2000. So I really appreciate the fact that you're staying with us. Sorry, there were a couple of other things I wanted to mention. I did want to also, sorry, I did want to also thank all the candidates for running, whether they won or lost. And that's because this year for the council race, it was my first experience in which every candidate, I had actually worked with every candidate that was running for town council. And so I understood the strengths of all of them and they would have all served very well on this council. So I really want to say thank you for them coming forward because it's a very important part. And it is a huge commitment, not by only the candidate, but it's also by the family because they really do sacrifice in that. So I hope that as we enter into this season of Thanksgiving, that we all thank everyone, including those who ran, those who've been successful and those who haven't. And I did want to mention one thing. So we took a picture before we started the council meeting, it's kind of a new tradition, I hope. So I actually was going through the archives and of course, citizens won't, but you'll get to see this. So in 2004, I found a picture in which we did the same thing. Ms. Justice actually had dark hair. I was 30 pounds heavier, but it is something that we had started as a tradition that we kind of lost and I'm really glad that we were able to bring that back. And if anybody would like to see it, I was surprised when I found it and that's what made me think about asking about, that we do it again. So I might even turn the picture over to the town and it's archived, but just want to thank everybody for everything that we've been able to do over the past year.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you for the kind words. The marijuana moratorium, Tom Manager and I have discussed it on a number of occasions. We've closely monitored the timing of bringing forth a moratorium. We did not want to pull the trigger too quickly on it because there are time limits on bylaw as to the length of a moratorium, six months. And as a consequence, we expect the state's going to take the full nine months and that with the recount that was acknowledged today to take place, we really expect January 7th to be about the date of certification of this election. So January will be a busy month for all of us and I expect that there'll be a moratorium. I myself want to see us be very protective of our community. I worry about the public road hazard where you can't measure a period, a person's impairment, so that concerns me greatly, being in close proximity to underage, to children going to schools and any access that is promoted for underage children is something we have to work tremendously to protect our kids again. So those will be a couple of the things that I'm going to focus on. I want to thank Scarborough for reelecting me. I'm excited, the amount of work that we have in front of us is tremendous. I previously thanked Katie Foley or offered my congratulations to her for winning and I particularly enjoyed getting to meet Annalee Rosenblatt and Marge De Sanctis, had known either very well, really enjoyed the opportunity to get to know them and the contribution. I know that Marge is anxious to continue to participate in municipal affairs. The real winners of last week's election really was the town of Scarborough. The town of Scarborough set records, all-time records of six votes short of 13,000 votes cast. Never anything close to that before. It was a 78% of registered voters, again, a record for Scarborough. So it's online, it's interesting to look at because it does tell you something about our community. So it's available and online. And lastly, I want to thank Jean Marie. She's been a great advisor to me, my closest advisor, and I would talk with her frequently to get good counsel, wisdom, knowledge, and it was a great pleasure serving with you these past three years. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, but voluntary. Thank you.
You had to have the last.